On this day, Tuesday, December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, at seven P. M. At Woodrise. I put the agents to the leg. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Secretary, if you would please.
Justin Neller.
Here.
Nick Gattflin.
Here.
Mario Helma.
Yes.
C. J. Gassler.
Here.
John Noel is absent. And Leslie Philak.
Here.
And Tom Schultz is absent.
Did we hear from Tom and John?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to excuse Tommy John from the phone. Can you hear me?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening, December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three?
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda dated December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Agenda approved. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes dated November twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated November twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes approved. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Uh, no, we do not.
Now a call for the public. This is an opportunity for anyone to get up and speak not related to any business on the agenda. That leads us to our new business for this evening, which is a site plan review. Item code P. C. twenty-three dash one-three located at one fifty-one South Washington Street. The, uh, this is for the applicant, Just Coffee Beans Oxford LLC. As we know it, maybe coffee. Mario, if you would, walk us through your assessment.
Thanks. Good evening, everyone. Um, tonight we're here to discuss this proposed site plan review. Um, the site itself that we're discussing is twenty-five thousand five hundred square feet area. Um, it's located, uh, directly, um, south, south of Lincoln Street on the west side of Washington Street. Um, the site is directly adjacent on the north with a parking lot that is associated with the Oxford Veterinary Hospital, directly adjacent to the south with the recently completed or well, the completed, uh, Clean Hub car wash. The site itself has, is vacant. It's unimproved except for two driveway curb cuts that ends, one at the northwest corner of the property, the other at the southeast corner of the property. Um, so I'm going to go over my review letter dated, uh, December eighteenth. Uh, this is in reference to site plans dated, uh, December eleventh. Um, apologies, I'm not sure when you received that letter, but I'll just go over the, this review because the applicant, uh, had the opportunity to revise their initial set of plans based on our initial reviews from myself and from Rowan Hall. But going over, uh, the use itself is permitted by our district. The building as proposed is in compliance with our dimensional requirements. The zoning ordinance has specific drive-through requirements, um, related to, uh, access to our locations, provision of bypass lane, and the site itself is in compliance with all these standards. The revised site plan, uh, does have a note stating that the sale of alcoholic beverages will be prohibited. That's, uh, one of the requirements of our drive-through standards. Uh, and then the only thing really related to this that I wanted to point out in terms of any kind of condition is that the, um, the, the menu boards on the site are intended to, uh, have a certain height and, uh, luminance requirements. So we would recommend that any site plan approval, uh, when granted, be contingent upon the applicant complying with the section four point one point thirteen F., which governs the menu board standards. Um, and the applicant has revised the site plan to note that the menu board will be installed with a photo cell and automatic dimmer module, so it will be adjusted, the luminance level, uh, based on the ambient light level. So they are, they are noted that on the site plan, so we would recommend still as a condition of approval. Is a brief discussion about building architecture. Um, they're proposing a, uh, very clean and simple, uh, modern, I should say, uh, structure. It's would be utilizing dark gray vertical metal panels for majority of all four elevations, and then have utilizing a horizontal faux wood look as described by the manufacturer, a metal panel for a tower feature at the northeast corner of the building. Um, and there are only two windows, uh, for the, on the building, one for the drive-through window and one for the walk-up service. No customers would be entering the building. Um, so as mentioned, it's very contemporary, clean and modern. Um, the only thing I just, we point in discussion is that, um, technically it's still in the D. D. A., and so, uh, you know, whether a more clean and modern building, uh, fits in with historic character of the core downtown, uh, versus the adjacent, uh, more farther away location is up for discussion. I mean, I should say, if you feel it's a, it's a, it's something that you'd like to discuss, um, you know, look, take a look at other Big B's in the Oakland County area. They tend to be either, if they are in strip mall, well, majority of them are in a commercial development, and they usually do have more masonry look to them or, or, uh, more architectural details, larger windows. Um, a visit to their Big B corporate site, uh, website does indicate that this, I, looking at Big B's and other communities that I've been in, they, they, I believe they have proposed these, but I don't see any under construction yet. But this is this type and style that I believe the Big B is gearing towards, similar to how Starbucks is gearing towards this type of drive-through, quick instruction building. Uh, there's nothing wrong with it. Like I said, it's very clean and contemporary. It's up to you what you feel, uh, where that transition into downtown begins, because this is on the south edge of downtown. Uh, but how, how we transition and blend into architectural character that's more historic is up to you. Um, just a suggestion might be that they could add, um, windows, uh, like some trans windows. As I mentioned, the website indicates that some of those buildings do have like a trans windows that, uh, that adds to the architectural details. Maybe some other architectural details, like a foundation wall that's a different material, like the masonry. That's only if you feel that that's necessary, uh, given its location. So moving on, with regards to parking requirements, they're in complete compliance with all parking standards, uh, going into site access and circulation. The revised plans, uh, including, uh, has provided, uh, show, uh, a truck maneuvering plan, and those maneuvering plans do show that garbage trucks and emergency vehicles can both effectively and efficiently access the site. They can access the, uh, trash, um, dumpster enclosure location, and, uh, emergency vehicle can access the site effectively. So, uh, those vehicles, the site access and, and proposed configuration of the curb cuts is appropriate. Um, one thing I wanted to point out too is that in the, in your packet, I believe you have some communication from adjacent property owners with regards to an easement issue, uh, with regards to the fact that the northwest corner of the site has that, will be the location of a access point. Um, that location is actually preferred, uh, just from a site access and efficiency standpoint, because if the, that driveway was moved to the southeast corner closer to Washington Street, you're going to have more vehicles attempting to drive into that curb cut for the, uh, drive, parking lot, and then making that sharp left to get into the, the Big B. We designed, or we worked with the car wash, uh, operator to minimize the traffic curb cuts on Washington because of the, uh, high traffic volume and the, and the speeds of the vehicles. So moving that curb cut on the north, northern property line to the east, I don't think would be very efficient and safe. It would create a dangerous, it would create a unsafe atmosphere, more traffic conflict points adjacent to Washington Street. In addition, the, the potential for stacking vehicles on a, on a morning to be stacked and go into Washington could be an issue. It's deliberately designed in its current configuration so that when vehicles are stacked and stacked farther, they will go along Washington, so there's a larger stack of vehicles. So that location is intended, uh, is intended that way. One other thing, uh, while the, uh, that, you know, the adjacent property owner did bring up some valid concerns with regards to cut through traffic, um, technically the easement is, uh, issued between the two private property owners because they are the ones that have, uh, come into this agreement. With regards, we as this village are just want to make sure that that curb cut, the northwest curb cut adequately has the legal access onto the site. Their easement agreement specifically states that vehicles exiting from Big B only have access to that parking lot. They do not have access to the, uh, Oxford Veterinary Hospital property. So technically, the vehicles should not be going there. Whether people will do that or not, uh, it's possible. Might be possible, even though they're not supposed to. My suggestion would be that the private, that the private property owners discuss some alternatives to address that off-site, rather than in-site. The easiest thing would be to put a do not enter sign on that, uh, on that, um, access point into the open, uh, into the veterinary hospital property. So that way, when vehicles, if vehicles did exit from Big B, they would be staring right at a do not enter sign. They, they're not supposed to go that way. They're not supposed to go on the veterinary hospital property. Just wanted to give that a thinking with regards to that issue. Uh, moving on, uh, looking at loading and, and deliveries to the site, the applicant has, uh, stated that they're only going to be utilizing a dual axle box truck that's about twenty-five feet long, uh, and that, uh, their track, uh, excuse me, the truck maneuvering plan shows that a box truck should access the site effectively. The only issue might be that unless they can effectively guarantee that they won't be receiving deliveries from Cisco, uh, excuse me, from a wholesaler like a Cisco or likes of other kind of, it's like you just never know what could be there. But if the planning commission feels that, um, their, their assurance that they will not have tractor trailer deliveries is appropriate, we would just recommend that a condition of approval be, uh, that tractor trailer deliveries are prohibited. And the only reason, and the main reason for that is down the line, if tractor trailer vehicles are visiting the site, having that condition on their site plan will be a, be able to be used by code enforcement to, to remind the, the operator that tractor trailer vehicles are not supposed to be visiting the site. So if you believe that the twenty-five foot is appropriate, then it might be given the size of the building, you know, then, then that'd be fine. One other inconsistency, uh, they have the, on one sheet, they have the loading zone in the front yard. On the sheet ten, they have the loading zone on the side of the building, uh, near the drive-through window. They just need to correct that inconsistency. So those are some of the main issues. Just moving on, the landscape plan, uh, has been revised initially. Notice been added stating that they will be utilizing, uh, underground irrigation system, and, um, there is a note stating that, uh, thirty percent of single plant species is permitted as the maximum. Uh, so they don't have the calculations, but they will comply, and the numbers, um, proposed on their plant materials of this is appropriate. So we would just defer to the planning commission if there's any other, uh, landscape, uh, plan revisions they'd like to see. Uh, the lighting plan is in compliance. They have provided, photo rec plan, have provided detailed cut sheets. All of that is in compliance with the ordinance, as, as well as the dumpster enclosure. Finally, um, they, um, have updated, uh, some of the notes with regards to the, uh, sidewalk and the patio, uh, just because the rendering showed very nice and attractive, uh, fencing around the patio, and that is now noted on the site plan, so that's in compliance. And just one, uh, suggestion, it's nothing that's required, but it is, uh, directly adjacent to a very attractive patio that the car wash site has, and it looks like there might be an easy way for people to walk from the Big B onto that site. So if, if they have the opportunity to talk to the car wash and maybe have that sidewalk connection, that probably would be some extra added feature to the site, but it's just a suggestion, nothing that's required necessarily. So in the end, we do think, uh, this, uh, site is substantially in compliance with zoning ordinance and with the, uh, approvals, uh, conditions of approval. So we would recommend a planning commission grant approval for the site plan contingent upon, any revised site plan addressing the issue related to, um, the loading zone, and if the planning commission had any, uh, building or landscaping suggestions, a condition that the deliveries, uh, by tractor trailer, trailer vehicles will be prohibited, and just that the applicant submit, um, a site plan, uh, excuse me, sign permit application in compliance with the ordinance. And finally, of course, anything noted by the city engineer or by marketing. So, uh, I, I would be happy to take any questions as a discussion.
Thank you, Mario. Um, planning commissioners, I believe we have the applicants here with us. Um, if you're in agreement, I'd like to invite them to come up and share the vision for the, the property and maybe add any comments to the conditions or concerns that Mario raised. Once we hear from them, then we can have open dialogue and questions back to Mario. Are there any objections from the planning commission?
Well, good idea.
So if, uh, you would, I'd invite you to come to the podium, state your name, address, and affiliation with the, uh, the property, and again, just share your overall vision with the property and any comments, um, to some of the conditions or contingencies that Mario raised would be great for our assessment.
Sounds good. My name is Sal Lorenzano from Design House Architecture in Auburn Hills, address three three zero zero Auburn Hills. Um, I am hired today by Scott and Amy Harris to do the development of the Big B Coffee Shop. Um, it is primarily a takeout, walk-up, and drive-through facility, as you guys could see on the plans. Um, building proposed is seven hundred square feet. We got a roughly five hundred square foot outdoor patio seating that's fully enclosed and not stopped. Um, in regards to the conditions of the approval, um, I would like to talk about the materials a little bit. Um, we are using higher quality metal panels, um, that is prescriptive with Big B's concept and design. Um, I don't know if there's any kind of recommendation to utilize minimal masonry. I, I knew that was one of the comments we'd be a little bit more open to, um, if that was a kind of pressing subject necessarily. Um, on my end, in front of the site access and the easement plans, I'm sure that, you know, like Scott and Amy can talk with us, there will probably be some kind of agreement with, between the landlords at that point. Maybe there's some site access science that you could provide, uh, but we're more than open to your guys' ideas. So, uh, I'll leave it up to you.
Um, I, I have a follow-up question on the, um, in regards to the building architecture. Um, if Mario made a comment that what is being proposed seems to be consistent with other, uh, newer developments for Big B, are these certain requirements that are imposed are a result of a franchise agreement?
Correct.
Okay.
I can add a question.
Go, go, sure.
Um, I'll send it. Thank you, Sal. I'm Amy Harris, uh, nine forty-three Water Smith Drive. Um, I'm the franchisee of this new building. We're very excited about it. Um, regarding the actual design of the building, there, there is one that's been developed probably two, three years ago in Elliot, Michigan. That's kind of where we got that look and feel from, um, very contemporary, uh, modern look, um, with the seal type of look on the outside. Um, we are, in full candor, although it's unrelated to this, going to be developing one in Lake Warren. Um, very similar type of look. Um, it will have more windows and so forth because there is a cafe associated with it. This one obviously is a drive, uh, drive-through only due to space limitations. Uh, but it is, um, it is more common. There are a few more that are actually being developed with that same type of look, so this would not be the first. Um, just to kind of clarify that. Um, regarding, uh, just a little bit about our vision, um, we kind of fell in love with Big B a few years ago. Um, my husband had a connection with, um, the BQ manufacturer, and, uh, we just really fell in love with the model, what they stand for, um, and, um, we feel that there is definitely a need for a drive-through coffee shop on South on the Pier in that area. Um, the closest coffee shop to that location would be, um, ten miles north, potentially in Medora. Um, there is a ten corners on the opposite side of the road by an iron, but most people are not going to do that, um, Michigan U-turn when they're heading to I seventy-five. Um, so we would be the next coffee shop, and we would have, um, an easy, an easy out access point. Um, with the overflow that I'm sure many of, many of us have seen, uh, on the Pier Road at some competitor coffee shops, um, there's definitely a need for a drive-through coffee shop. So that's where we got the idea. Um, and, you know, we're very passionate about it. Obviously, our, our goal is to open, you know, two of them in, within the next couple of years, so, um, do you have any other questions?
Amy, if I may? Um, I heard, I think Sal mentioned drive-through and walk-up as a service option?
Correct.
Okay. Now, walk-up meaning the vehicle would have to park and then, as it stays, walk up to some service window.
Correct.
Um, the site plan, I believe, has, is it a total of ten parking spaces?
Correct.
On-site? Um, do you believe that that's adequate and/or would, um, make this traffic congestion concern better or worse?
I actually think it would make it, um, better. Uh, the majority of people that are going to be coming to our coffee shop are people that are looking to get something quick and on the bell. Um, I, the majority of these are, um, drive-through traffic. Um, a few people in the summer months might get out of their vehicle. I can tell you it'll be most likely that they won't in the winter months. Um, but, um, we feel that the five allocated spots, the one handicap, ADA compliant, the four along the side will be dedicated for customers, the five in the back for employees. We think that will be ample, um, because there just won't be that many people, um, getting out of their car. It'll be primarily drive-through traffic.
Fair enough.
And, um, we think also just to kind of add on to it, the whole car wash, car wash component, um, we've had to say, and we know they're doing very well, and we thought our models were, were a good match for one another, that they would basically feed off of one another. Somebody would come to get a coffee and, oh, I might as well get my car wash. If somebody was going to get a car wash, well, I'm going to stop to get a coffee. So just the, the merger of the two is just, the model will work nicely for the, uh, village.
Very well. Thank you.
Leslie.
I have, um, several questions. Do you plan to work to draw pedestrians? Because that is a, also a growing pedestrian area.
Um, I mean, you, you done?
Sure. Good evening, planning commission. Scott Harris, um, also same address, nine four-three Water Smith Drive in Oxford. Uh, so yes, the goal and one of the reasons that we wanted the walk-up window, uh, is to actually attract, uh, people who want to walk up and down the village, perhaps bike. Maybe they'd make a little detour off of the Polly and Trail and say, hey, look, I need a little refreshment. Um, so that's why on your plan, you can see a very attractive patio. I think, uh, Mario alluded to the fact that we have that. That's very intentional because during the warmer months, we want people to sit, uh, we're going to have some comfortable furniture and grab a beverage, a sandwich, or whatever their, uh, you know, liking is. So we are certainly trying to draw that traffic, and you can see that we have designated walk paths and things like that to make sure that it's safe for them.
And to kind of add on to what Mario was saying, I mean, I think it would definitely be a nice addition to have, um, our walkway kind of carry over into the car wash area.
Because if, if your model is going to include that, I think it wouldn't only be drive-through traffic. It wouldn't only be people parking and walking into the window. There also would be patrons who would be gathering in a slower way and coming in. And, uh, I just wanted to make sure that you had planned for that. It sounds like you have. Um, Mario, do you have any other thoughts about that issue of pedestrian?
Um, just that I do think it's a strong possibility because you do have, uh, it's directly adjacent to the neighborhoods to the, on the, um, west side of Washington, so it'd be also nice that the residents could, could walk there. And as a coffee shop, as we all know, people tend to find their favorite one, and then they find their spot, and they tend to stay a while.
Right.
So chances are you might have regulars that, and then like your patio will stay there.
Yes, I think that's likely to be part of, you know, the patrons that you expect.
I agree. And then the one thing, I don't know if it's actually in the plan, but we would like to have some bicycle racks available for people that are, you know, making their way to our location.
Um, I have a couple other questions too, or tech.
Yes.
So you were talking about having limitations to what you could do to the building based on the, what can you do to add features to the building to help it blend in with our with our strategy?
Um, I believe if it is in more of a cost-effective way, you know, we could probably, and I kind of want them to speak to it, but there's some different masonry ordinance that we could potentially include in there, but within the franchise corporate standards. Um, I could let you guys speak to that directly in minutes back. Okay.
Okay. Um, yeah, so, um, as of right now, Big B does not have any exterior guidelines that are mandated. Um, so it's pretty open. Obviously, the interior, the equipment, it's, it, there's a firm schedule that we need to adhere to. Um, so we can potentially add, um, some, you know, some masonry, some type of cauldron stone. Um, however, we are trying to create like a Big B brand and have each of our developments kind of mirror one, one another, not to say that we can't, uh, make, you know, little additions and stuff and make it, you know, uh, more favorable to your liking in the village. I mean, we're open to doing that, but from a look stand, overall look stand part, we are trying to make them, you know, uh, mirror one another.
What about the trans windows? Is that an option?
Um, we could find a place to sample that. I, I mean, if we update the, you know, the front exterior, maybe above the takeout window, we could kind of open it up a little bit more. Um, maybe there's a potential for like spandrel glass on, on some of the facade just to kind of give a better appearance of some glazing. Um, it won't be applicable, which is because the way the floor plan lays out, you kind of be going into a storage room, there's a bathroom on one side, and then you have a different set of things.
The kitchen.
The kitchen.
Yeah.
Something of that nature. So we'd be open to spandrel, but it, it wouldn't be incomparable when that happens.
Yeah, so we're talking about the aesthetic and the appearance, and I think, I think, uh, there is room for making some adjustments so that it does have a better blend with the adjacent properties and also the village aesthetic, which is important to us. And I understand that there are other restrictions, and we're trying to work within that, but I do think that, uh, efforts could be made to just, you know, help it be more of a transition without affecting your brand, without affecting the signage, you know, in a, in a meaningful way.
Of course, sure.
Um, has the D. D. A. weighed in on this at all? It's in the D. D. A. district, though. Um, and then other question I have is regarding the, uh, the landscape, um, schedule. I just wanted to make sure that you're, when you're looking at the percentage, that you're only including trees and shrubs, not frineals in those percentages?
Correct.
And that looks like it in the schedule to me.
Yeah.
He's dying, I get it.
These are landscape architects.
Oh, hi, how are you? But, um, I do suggest that ginkgos not be used in this site because they're not really North American natives, and they also don't fit in as well with the historic character of the downtown, which is one thing you can do is use some of the canopy trees and street trees in plan to help with that blending. That would be my suggestion about those things. That's, that's all I have.
Thanks, Leslie. Um, C. J., do you have any questions or comments? Justin?
Uh, yeah, a few. Uh, so first thing is, um, architectural design, I like it. It looks good. I'm, I'm, you know, it's, uh, I, I think it looks good. I have no, what I would like some tweaks and maybe some things, but I think overall I'm, I'm very happy with the design. Um, a couple of questions that I have as far as, first thing is the privacy fence or privacy wall in the back. Mario, remind me what, um, what, what do we, what was the height that we gave? Will it be consistent with the same height as the wall that we have at the, um, car wash?
Yes, I do believe, uh, that it will be the exact same height. I believe, I want, I'm trying to remember the height. I want to say it's... I want to say it's, I'd say at least thirty-six, if not four feet tall or four foot six.
I tried to go back in the notes to see what we, what we decided on. I was flipping through my book and I couldn't find what we decided on for that. Just wanted to see what the consistency was related to the.
One of the, if you'd like, one of the conditions of approval could be that the wall be the same height as the car wash.
Okay.
And I believe that was, I want to say it was four foot six, because I believe that's what the.
I believe so too, but I'll verify that and make sure it gets on the lines.
We don't have a problem with that.
It was, and the reason why we wanted that was as the lights, the headlights come around, it would be consistently shiny in the property in the back. And we wanted to, we wanted to make sure that there was a buffer there.
Obviously.
As far as the turnaround, I didn't see anything in the notes or anything from the fire chief of saying that that's adequate, adequate amount for turnaround for his, for the truck, for the fire truck.
Yeah, and I think they just, the only conditions they put out were not locked and to be sure the address was eligible or certain size.
Correct. Okay. Just wanted to make sure that, because a lot of times they would say, all right, it's adequate or not adequate.
I expect they would be in their parking lot. I think they would probably just use the easement.
Yeah.
Yeah, but based on the turning movements that they provided, was the Accrude Tech provided, they would need to utilize the at-curb cut from the parking lot, which is the, between the hospital, the veterinary hospital and the site. And that's fine. Firefighters, they'll, they'll get where they need to go. They always do. But we always want to give, make it as easy and fast as possible so they can service the property as quickly as possible too. But I do believe that, I'm trying to find that sheet that has the width, length of the truck, but I believe.
It's right here, I had it in front of me, it's twenty-four feet. Which it looks as though it'll fit, but usually, you know, you know, the chief usually, he usually makes his comments related that I say it's adequate or not. I'm just curious, okay. Any concerns? Okay, so from, talk about maybe the row letter specifically. I know, Mario, you're not part of Row, but still, anything outlined in Row that you had concerns on above what I?
Just, and I just want to clarify something. I talked to Sal before the meeting about, I was talking about interconnection between their drains and, and I had that wrong. Interconnection was more of a fly that they prefer to replicate. You have met what he asked about on the retention mechanism. I was looking, reading, meshing those two comments together.
No worries.
Okay. So do you believe that everything else can be handled from an administrative aspect, Mario?
Absolutely, yes. Provided, just having your direction on if there are any architecture issues and if there are any landscape issues.
Okay. Let's see, what else do I have here? So bringing up the letter specifically about the, about the entrance and understanding the easement and understanding what easement is for. These, we as the, you know, we as the village are not responsible for how the traffic flows. But at the same time, we're supposed to still consider when there is a potential issue arising. If we don't have some sort of signage there, people are going to come through, you know. If, something is going to happen. But at the same time, is that should we be putting a do not enter sign there? Because also, the neighbor, also should, his customer should be able to have access to that spot as well. So is there a, could there be a no turn, you know, no, maybe right turn only sign that could be adequate to be able to meet those needs?
You're saying right at the drive-through area?
So right at the, it would be the north, the north entrance. It's basically the easement, the easement concern is so that the customers are coming out of that northern easement that they're not cutting straight through the veterinary parking lot. And even though you put like a do not enter, his customers should have the right way to enter through there if they want to. You guys can't control if your customers go through there. You guys have no control over that, right? People are going to come through.
Yeah, and I talked to Dr. Steve briefly about this and he mentioned, I mentioned, I talked to him as well. Do not enter on them would work because his customers and, and some of them want, he wants to enter. More of a private property, customers of Oxford Veterinary Hospital only or something like that would have, again, people only are basing it on they feel like they're going that, right? So I think what you mentioned before about if someone was to exit instead of looking all the way around, going on twenty-four, like I'm just going to go this other way, you know, maybe it's right turn only as you're coming north onto the easement, right? As well as the signage across, you know, private property, Oxford Veterinary Hospital, needs only, customers only. The best you can do, I think, is to direct them, but you gotta always go through.
I see your big admission. I see it as being a, I see it being an issue. They might want to say we want to put up signs, but at the end of the day, there's going to be an issue. And we're probably going to have to get involved and then, yeah.
It becomes a private matter between two people because it's not a public street.
Yes, correct.
So that's why the enforcement, and now, you know, when you see some parking, private parking lot saying, you know, customer parking only, all of this will be totally, that's kind of a private enforcement that they're doing. And that's how it's handled. The signage would need to be in place and I think we're open to signage and even perhaps changing the signage on the other side. Because you have some signage going in there as well to direct your customers in, so you guys approved for the signage recently.
Yes.
So you don't want to have, clutter it too much, but.
Yeah, I'd like to share some comments when it's overrated time.
Actually, let's do it now since we're on this topic right now, if we can.
Sure.
Did you, please?
Sure.
How do you even start, though? I don't know. I need somebody to tell me seriously how this property is going to be.
All right, I apologize.
I, do you come in here at the car wash, come around here, circle from here, and then exit through here?
That's essentially what we're proposing, correct.
And this is for, for the fire department has emergency access to the hydrant on Lincoln?
And/or access off of the door.
Is this access being left over so the fire department has access to it?
No. Dr. Steve owns this property. He bought that property explicitly as a purpose of adding additional parking and stuff for his customers and stuff. So that's why it is there and not blocked off. Because he wants his employees and customers to park in this easement area here and be able to get to his building. Actually, this is the easement here, right?
Correct.
So there's parking spaces there for his residents or customers and, and workers. They need to build, he wants his, that's why I say you can't just put do not enter because he wants his customers. Perhaps they miss Lincoln Street, they want to pull in here and come in there. That's what this is meant for. The concern is people are going to come around here, once you get your coffee, your access is there. They would have looked back around here and decided to go elsewhere and shout out there, that's what the concern is.
But isn't, is there a hydrant on Lincoln right over there?
Uh, near the, near, yeah, I think right with the, right, I think right with the vet in the.
I'm just going to gather up these pictures and then talk about what my concern is.
Yeah, right across the street, yes. As you recall, they were going to try to force the car wash guy to drag them across.
Okay.
And so they.
Now we can go.
Ready?
Okay, please.
Steven, Steve, I own the Oxford Veterinary Hospital on Lincoln Street. And first of all, I just want to welcome you. I think it's a great idea. We're excited about it and we think that we're happy with the car wash. It's a fantastic facility and this will be great. And your walk-up customers will probably be mind-stashed.
I agree about that.
Yes. But just to share with you, we've already had some issues with, this is not a convenience, this is a safety issue. And as soon as we developed that parking area during COVID, and this was an open area where people could pull into our parking lot and then turn and have an alternate access point to LaPierre Road, both going south and if you're going north and wanted to cut in. And again, during COVID, there was a, not the, the car dealership, but the gun shop and in the back, they had some exercise facility going on. And we had people just honestly zipping through there on a regular basis. And I put, signs just don't work with all due respect. I put up signs and I, it went in the middle so people wouldn't pull through. And I almost got hit by a car one time because, you know, they're, they're just coming in and going out. And so that's why I wanted to share these pictures with you and I put little circle. You can see the line of sight as, for anybody that is going to be sitting at that, that entrance to the easement, you know, you've got a line of sight right through the parking lot. And it's there, you're going to do it if that's where you want to go. And so with all due respect, Mr. Ortega, you know, you're right. You can't go down close to LaPierre Road, but I mean, we'll talk to maybe twenty feet if we could just look to.
Off-center.
Yeah, just off-center so you don't have line of sight. It could make all the difference in the world. And then if it said right turn only, you know, I think it would do a lot to, to, to improve the safety aspect of this. So, you know, that's just my suggestion. Again, this is not adversarial at all. We welcome you. We think it's friendly developing it and it's exciting, it looks great and brings you to buy your coffee. So anybody have any questions for me?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me ask you, Sal. Okay, how, how, if we were asking to make it off-site, so, so off-center, so you can make the entrance slightly farther to the.
West.
East.
East. My parents.
Maybe upside down.
Or if, so, yes, so either to the east or to the west. Because you can do it to the west as well, can you not?
Well, the retention pond is there.
The retention pond is there, the garbage can is there, yes.
The curb cut is already in place there. That, this site plan is meeting up to the existing curb cut that was put in.
Okay.
So that's obvious spot where they put it.
Yeah. Was the curb cut always there? How long has the curb cut been there for that, this piece of property?
When that was, there were two homes there, as you can recall.
Yes, I do remember.
And then there was a path through. And my parking lot actually had a curb and we had the dumpster there. And then as soon as that road was put in, then we moved the dumpster, you know, the dumpster over. And that was put in, I was told, because the township wanted that, or the village wanted it for access through there. And so it was just a dirt road that went through and we had the heating and cooling. But Dennis Green said, you know, I asked him, why do we have it here? And he said, this is what they want.
Because each individual lot was not going to be able to get MDOT property available, right? So for that reason, they typically will say, hey, you need to interconnect these properties in the back. You've seen that bike in front of Myers, they go and they go connect in the back. So when we were looking at this easement and he was purchasing this, again, and his own and developing all the costs on himself, his reasoning for it was to expand his parking and stuff for his customers and people. And then part of the requirement was, okay, we have to provide some kind of, well, mainly it's fixed to the back. Four point seven five acres of residential back. That continues westward again, it will be in the back. To the, to the left of the drawing here, to the west behind all of that, to that four point seven five acres of residential property.
Yeah.
So this, this is going to provide that, primarily this cut through going in the back was provided access to the rear, to the rear space. At the same time, it just made sense to give access to this site here, not knowing, this wasn't anywhere there. This was twenty eighteen, I think, when we were doing this.
Makes sense. So, so from your design of the parking, of the parking space, or, so basically, as you're, as you're pulling in and looking at the, is, the way the traffic flows or the way it looks like it flows, it's not going to be advantageous for someone that finishes their order to go back through the line because of the, because of the width it doesn't look like. Can two cars fit side by side to get through there?
In the order lane?
Yeah, well, so they, it's not the one way. So it's, so, yeah, you have the north side because as I'm looking here, it's not as wide as like a.
It's only thirteen feet wide, so it is directly only one-way direction.
So most customers are never going to go back through then to turn out of that northern, out into the easement.
The only thing I would say, I would, but, go ahead. No, I'm sorry, maybe you. I would agree, like, most customers would not, like, when they're, but as people get used to the site, local, locals, basically, once they learn it, they, they might learn to do that. When there's low traffic on the site. If the, if the drive-through is busy and then it's backed up into that one lane, then yes, nobody's going to go that way because they're going to be sitting in line with their coffee waiting for other people to order theirs. So it will be, it will be minimal, but I still think it's a possibility.
So even if we did, I mean, thinking hypothetically, I mean, we can, we can think of different, even if it was off, so even if it was off-center, somebody that did live back there, it would, it would be relevant because it's still kind of ignore everything in the beginning, so.
Sorry, yes and no. I mean, I do, I do see the advantage of being, of being off-center. But how effective that will be in the end, we just don't really know. Because people are, we can put up the signs, we can design in a certain way, but because it physically exists, this physical connection, people will find a way.
I mean, how many live on Lincoln, that Lincoln Street direction? I mean, are we often teaching about the village, teaching that whole side? Teaching about this whole neighborhood?
Instead, instead of making a left-hand turn on, trying to make a left-hand turn on to Washington at any point to go north, it'd be difficult. But it's mainly, you know, people that wouldn't go north on it, mainly people that want to go west into the village.
They could easily come out of here, go to Minnetonka, turn right, go right back.
Exactly, yeah.
Mario, there's an easement agreement between parcel number oh-two-five and parcel number oh-two-three for them to use oh-two-three's property to exit.
That is correct, yeah.
Does that easement allow for, they need customers to use that easement also?
So basically, I, just give you a number on it, but basically, the easements, it actually, they had an original easement granted between the property owner unto himself. And then when the doctor bought the property, they expanded on that, so that's the expanded easement. And it does allow, it still allows the Big B customers and anybody coming from that site onto just the parcel where the parking lot is that accesses out to Washington. It actually has a specific paragraph that says that those people exiting from, onto the parking lot cannot go onto the veterinary hospital property. They're two different pieces of property and it specifically states that those people cannot exit onto that one. So technically, they're not supposed to be doing that. But as I mentioned, the whole issue we're facing, it's just that because the physical connection exists for a car to do it.
I'm not worried about it, the docks, I mean, I was worried about it, but not with this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
In oh-two-three, which is the beach to the south, has an agreement with oh-two-five. Does that agreement allow customers from Big B to exit oh-two-three property?
Yes, based on, based on my reading.
Oh, yeah, yeah, designing that.
Now we can worry about that property.
I have no more questions related to the easement. Mario, I didn't see any, any, any issues that I did see as far as the sewer underground. Looks like it could be, it looks like it's going to be handled administratively and can be taken through Row could be, which would be an agreement.
Yeah, yeah, like the, I'm sure that's a change.
Correct, simple, uh, simple things. Let's see, what else do I have? That is all I have to write this night.
And quite frankly, I wanted the commissioners to speak to see how many of my questions and points were addressed mainly around the easement. Wanted to hear from all, all parties involved. Sal, maybe a question for you since you're still standing there. Has there been a development, timing plan generated?
Not one that's generated specifically, but I guess what's, do you guys want to speak to that?
So I think once we got approval that you were trying
So I think, um, once we got a pool that we were trying to move forward, you know, as quickly as possible, um, so, we were hoping to, we probably wouldn't be able, if we have good weather, we were talking about potentially still trying to get foundations and stuff in the ground, um, before, before February, I would say, if we can get permits and so forth. But our goal is to try to open by, I would say, like, April-ish, is what we're trying to do right now.
Okay. Other than timing to get permits, et cetera, do you anticipate or foresee any issues and delays of executing the plan?
We are currently working with contractors. I don't personally foresee anything, and the only, I think the biggest, uh, concern would be weather, you know, depending on how that comes into play.
Okay.
But we are in the midst of talking to contractors, as we speak, right now.
Fair enough.
You got anything you wanna add? Thank you.
Thank you. And the, the reason why I bring that up is, uh, we've had other cases in the village where, um, development begins, and then there are issues, and the property is left in a, um, not appealing manner or condition for an extended period of time. So, looking at the, the easements, and I don't believe you were involved in executing those easements dated 2019, had some general questions or concerns, thanks for alleviating those. Mario, do you have any other questions?
Oh, no, you guys were talking, we were over here going, oh my God, so I'm all handled. What's up with that, do you see that? What good ideas do you have?
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I, I'm still, still thinking over the easement entrance, and the concerns or the issues that could be, that could arise, and to be honest, that are going to arise later on in the future.
Do you feel like we need time to gather more information about that?
What if we, if we would consider, be the label there to do that, here? I mean, that, that would make that off, whether...
I mean, is it, we just go with this way then, because then there's more like...
No, because of, I, I, I mean, I give my views to them, I don't think anything bad.
So...
If this is developed in the back, and there's twenty townhomes in back there, there's a lot more traffic coming down that road, so it's gonna be even a bigger problem to address then. But I don't know of a good way to isolate your access, running corner in, so again, so this problem, yeah, there might be a way to solve this problem with the Internet port or the, uh, public guard that leaves, but eventually, we would like to see that developed in the back with, you know, a dozen or twenty, you know, townhomes or things like that. So, you, you could be looking at a fair amount of residences in, or another gate.
I'm not concerned about exit, I'm concerned about the entrance. The entrances is, is because when people are going to work, everybody's going south, everybody's cutting through the village, everybody's cutting through that way, and that's the first thing they're gonna do. They don't have to turn on the twenty-four, they, they can turn off of Lincoln, instead of turning off Lincoln and going, they're cutting right through our neighbor's, uh, parking lot, because they don't have to turn on twenty-four, come back around. Go ahead.
So, when, when we had problems with the M twenty-four project, and people were doing this similar thing, cutting through Genesis Credit Union, traffic was backed, you know, they were cut through there, they were switching lanes, um, so they couldn't go north by all stuff, they were cut through their lot. So, the police went through there and wrote a lot of tickets for impeding traffic, and they fed it, because there was a cut through. So, that's cut from one street to another. This, this easement is a public easement, it's not a building street, but it's a public track, who knows privately, they don't want it to be public access. So, so there could be, when I said earlier, it's a private matter between people, that's, that's in one sense, yes, the police can, um, get in there and, and do some enforcement of the cut through traffic, if they're coming off of Lincoln and vice versa. They did it, uh, they enabled a lot of tickets at the credit union down there, in the midst of our project. There's people leaving that for a cut through, looking through the back of the bank, coming out of the alley, looking around back, so there is some legal, negative, dark help with that.
So, I'm not a traffic engineer, but from my experience, you know, traffic engineers, they do want, when driveways intersect, uh, typically to be, uh, lined up, just that, just their, that's an engineer's nature, just to minimize traffic conflict points, meaning when cars go, are going, uh, by each other, there's no conflict, and the only time there's a conflict is when they turn. But if you shift it, they might think that that's, um, you know, causing additional traffic conflict points. Having said that...
We want traffic congestion in this case, but maybe less...
Exactly. That's the thing, it's like, and, and we do not necessarily want the efficiency of that intersection, so vehicles can go through, because you are attempting to prevent vehicles going in there. But once again, just going back to what I mentioned previously, there's no way to select, based on the customer, who can and can't exit that site, it's just based on the persons reading the signs and acknowledging, yeah, I'm not a customer to the hospital, veterinary hospital, so I should not be going there. Well, but we all know that people will do that, just because everybody's a patient. So, the only other way, I think the traffic might look at this, is trying to do some type of curb, directional curves, but the issue will be, meaning, for example, somehow trying to have rabrays curves that force traffic to go in a certain direction, like away from that, uh, the hospital property. The problem is, we're, this, this site also has an access easement to the property, to the triangle property to the rear. So, it's just not big enough, I think, for an engineer to design something that would, that would do that without, the only way I can see it is if that parking along, uh, the northern side of the parking lot was removed, but that defeats the purpose of the, of the site. You know, the, the, so, it's, it's difficult, the, I mean, I think your options are, um, even as it is, or with signage. Request the offset of the intersection, or request an actual traffic engineer to make up some suggestion, that we're not thinking of, that we may not do.
And why they want it there, though?
Is... What's that?
What, like the curb opening, why you want it there?
Yeah.
That's exactly...
Don't reach up at once.
Yeah, so you're saying, let's just come to the...
We have a curb cut. I mean, Doc doesn't want it there, none of us want it there.
You don't need to lock, climb, or some planning permission for it.
Yeah, please.
If you have an answer.
So, I mean, we did a little research, and again, we wanna be good neighbors to Oxford Veterinary Hospital, because that's the right thing to do. But again, and this is long before we ever contemplated being, you know, a Big B franchise owner in this specific property, right? But I'm, I'm gonna read this to you, because I think it really is very definitive at how this was written. So, this is on page two of the agreement, which is filed, um, with Oakland County, and it says, parcel...
Is that the easement agreement?
Easement, I'm reading the easement agreement. That's why my wife was looking.
I, what easement, between who?
So, this is the easement agreement that was signed or executed, um, June twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen, and, and I, I can give you a copy of this.
Oh, we don't have a budget. Between who? I didn't...
So, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this to you, and I can go answer a lot of questions. Um, so, Anacord hereby grants to DJG or its successors or interests for the use and benefit of parcel B and parcel D. Parcel B is the parcel that is the car wash and the future Big B. Parcel D is what, uh, Joe talked about, the future residential development behind, okay? A perpetual, non-exclusive easement over, across, and through the parking areas, roads, and drive aisles, now or hereafter located within parcel A. Parcel A is the drive. Collectively, the parcel A driveway identified on exhibit D. Parcel B and parcel D may use the parcel A driveway for access to and from parcel B and parcel D, and ingress and egress to South Washington Road, also known as La Pierro or Highway twenty-four, from and through parcel A. So, I mean, it, again, we didn't write this, the, we were not trying to do it to advantage of us, but that's what's legally there, and so, to make any curb cuts that would, you know, preclude that from happening would go against this easement, and this document would have to be modified. Well, the document itself grants the access, nowhere in the document, because I read the whole document, all fifteen pages, well, I don't think it says, that, um, how it's designed. So, how that access is designed and constructed, that's the purview of the planning commission for site planning. You, as, as the tenant of the property for parcel B, the Big B property, you do have that right, you have that right to access parcel A.
Right.
And so, and because you have, because for example, well, yeah, so you have that right, and so, the only way, you're right, the only way that could actually be eliminated is if you and Anacord, which is actually the veterinary hospital, agreed to eliminate that access. But what happened was, in April, there's, there's the first original easement agreement in April of, of two thousand nineteen, in which, uh, the property owner, uh, for the car wash granted to himself, because he still owned the, um...
Whole thing, one big parcel.
One big parcel, and so he owned that sliver that became the veterinary parking lot. He granted to himself that easement to have that right, because, for efficiency of access, because they wanted to make sure the parcel B had access alternatives, because we know the Oakland County Road by MDOT is not gonna grant, uh, that this twenty-five thousand square foot parcel, uh, an access drive onto La Pierro, M twenty-four, Washington. They were not, MDOT would not do it, they'd say, do cross-access agreements. So, that's why the agreements exist, is to provide alternatives. Could, could they, if the property owners between them two decided to eliminate that, that's, that's the only real way that that access could be eliminated? How it's designed is, is in the end, I, I believe, not an attorney, but I believe, it's up to the planning commission. But in the end, I think all the parties are amiable, it seems, at this point, so it's just a matter of trying to figure out what works with the best intentions, knowing those access, the, the only way, the only reason that people will cut through the veterinary hospital property is how that's physically designed. And right now, it's physically designed as a two-way, people traveling from the parking lot onto the veterinary hospital. And that's just a result of, I hate to say it, but as a result of, when, when parcel that became just the parking lot was purchased, and had that encumbrance, and had that prescription that people from the Big B lot are gonna access there. They specifically cannot access the veterinary hospital, they cannot access it.
According to the easement.
According to the easement. Whether they do or not, we don't be... The other, the other point I'll mention is, and I think everyone has said this at least once here, that we can't prohibit, because people are ultimately going to do what they wanna do, but we can influence. And so, what we want to do, from an influence standpoint, is when you go through and have received your coffee, on the, on the patio side, we're gonna have, we are suggesting to have a sign that says, turn right to exit, right? So, we can influence behavior to the greatest extent possible, it will be next to a possible to completely guarantee and eliminate to the one hundred percent level, anyone doing what obviously the doctor doesn't want to happen through this property, right? And, and again, I would understand his purview on this, and, and not want that either, so we can only influence to the greatest extent possible, we can't prohibit it, unless literally drives are renewed.
But, uh, Mario, are you saying that if the property owners involved are in agreement with making a new easement agreement, that this problem can be resolved that way?
Once again, I'm not an attorney, but I do think that's the one way it could happen, because right now, the Big B property has the right of access onto the parking lot. If they choose to give up that right, then they, they can, they would just be knowingly restricting their access to just the drive in the front, and maybe that's efficient. We do have, with our requirements and with the circulation configuration, there is enough of, uh, space for an exit, or an exit lane for the drive-through people, eventually. The, the northern drive is thirteen feet wide, but then it widens to two, two lanes wide, and then people can continue around the site and go back out with one entrance. So, if, if they were to have just the one entrance, technically, it can function, and in compliance with our, our ordinance, and it would, people would need compliance with everything from the villagers' end. I would also add one other thing, if I can. Sure. So, we don't, we are, just to be clear, we are tenants, we have a land lease, we're building all the improvements. Yep. So, the decision to modify or permanently eliminate the easement is not our decision. So, it's not Scott and Amy Harrison, our partner in the back, it's not our decision to do that, it would actually have to be between the doctor and Sammy Puttak, who is the landowner, right? So, we have no authority to negotiate.
Correct. And, and so, one of the things I was gonna say is, I am not asking to, uh, for any type of easement change, that's not what I'm looking for. So, would you consider, would you con- consider putting up a small fence there, so you cannot go through that, uh, through that entrance? So, not change the curb cut, not make any arrangements, but just basically have a fence there, you just can't go through, you just can't use that entrance. When you do have, uh, let's say, garbage that needs to be picked up, you can open it up whenever you want, when you have deliveries, you can open it up.
You mean like a gate?
A gate, that's it, just a gate, just a gate that can be opened up when, um, special things that need to be happening, for whatever reason, but not for allowing customers to come through. Would you consider that?
So, my initial response is twofold. Number one is, I don't think we got the authority to make that, that call. Again, because of our lease, right, and knowing what's in our lease, we don't, we don't have authority to, to make that call. Number two, my comment would be, is, then, then there's really no purpose to have the, the easement there. So, I would, I would advocate actually against that.
I have a question for the back there.
Yeah.
How do you use, and that's parking? Can people, do people enter off Lincoln Street, then the parking up there? Or is that entrance out, twenty-four, where people park there? Cause I don't have a picture of your site, so I, I'm trying to picture it.
So, and your staff parking is along that new development, the road, the road with the easement that we're talking about, but we also have that for some of our clients parked there as well.
Do people drive back and forth there very often from your property to the easement property, in either direction? Or would it be, if there's only a pedestrian entrance, is that enough to get people from your easement parking into the building, because people don't drive that, or...
They certainly could park in that, that area that we're talking about, and then walk into the building, that's correct.
I'm just wondering, if they can't shut off their side...
Yeah, I could shut off mine.
If you could shut off your side, by allowing those people to access it pedestrian with their pets, which they're walking their way...
That's our Plan C.
Okay.
We had Plan A and B, and that's our Plan C.
I love that you have a C, and I'm gonna find a D.
But I'll share, let me share with you, that I did that, when, you know, when I shared this story about COVID, with those people that zipped through, I actually put up a cable, and I had a sign, and I had, um, a, it was all homemade, but it, it was quite, quite obvious that you weren't to drive through, people drove right through it, honestly, God.
People aren't that bright.
You know, when you get ahead of steam, you're, you're gonna go.
And I, I can't make you do anything, I'm just thinking.
Yeah, it's good, and we had to have this kind of conversation, to think outside the box.
I, I'm trying to solve, I'm trying to solve, like, I, I'm really excited for you guys to come in, I really want, but at the same time, I also have to be considerate of knowing how, um, how people work, and how people think, and how they're gonna find the least path of resistance, especially, you, everybody's coming from the south end, everybody that's coming through Waterston, cuts through Pontiac Street. If they had a Big B coffee over there, guess... If they have a Big B coffee over there, guess what they're going to do? They're going to cut through all through the back, all through the back of mine. I can't make an assumption, go ahead. I'm just thinking.
No, just to finish up, I'm just flitting.
And I see it as, that would be the additional cut through. And I just didn't, I'm thinking of alternatives so that we don't have to get to that point later on. Go ahead.
Okay, so, the people that are going to come around there and head north and, and potentially into yours, have already done this site, correct? They had to get there somehow. What if, and you're exiting the drive-through, you have two lanes going out there, what if that's where the curb was pointed only to the exits twenty-four? You're going to get, you look for a sign that says, "Please turn right." Right, I mean, what if that was, what if turning left wasn't an option, to look back around the building? That way, the only people then going to pop out that north one are going to be either they backed out of one of those spots, or the handicap spot, or, or they ran in line, got carried waiting, and then popped out. That's the only way they're going to get there.
Yeah, the easement. See, my concern's not people leaving, my concern's people coming in. That's really my biggest concern.
And he's got that problem already, right?
That's, that's the problem, and it's, everything is traveling south in the morning, everything's traveling towards this, and it's coming right through there. Everybody else, wait, can't.
How, when they got across with COVID, were they just traveling over hill, over dale, getting down to this place? Because there wasn't a road there, there was a two-trail.
It's delightful, a lady in an SUV just about took me out. I don't want to make a big deal about this, and I truly feel bad, I don't need to be an impediment to your efforts here. But it is a safety issue, I, you know, we've got people coming in with their children, dropping animals off at the same time that they're going to want to get coffee. You know, everybody comes in between eight and nine to bring their pets in, and they're anxious to get in and get out, and then for the rest of the day. So ours is kind of, you know, correspondence. Yeah, they drive through pretty quick.
So totally eliminated, Maureen's idea was, you all made it totally eliminated,
I know, but.
Which is not a good, good idea for you.
Yeah, maybe the offside, I mean, because that's even an option for you folks, I don't know.
So, once again, I'm not looking at removing the easement from either of these properties. That's not, I don't think, that is not an option. That's not, because it takes forever to get an easement beginning.
Right.
We don't want to do that. All I'm asking is, is there, can you put up, you're putting up like a concrete fence in the back that, you know, restrict lights, can you put up a gate, a small gate, something that matches the gate, similar to what you have right here? But then, that can be opened up, just goes across the entrance, that's all, that's all I'm asking. Just something that goes across this entrance right here, that's closed up, so, you know, if, if people start cutting through his parking lot because they're cutting through, that's, that's on hand. But at least it's not coming from you. It's not, they cannot come through that entrance.
Like a motorized gate or some sort of?
A motorized, or even just a hand gate, just a, just a, do, bi-fold, just aluminum hand gate. Where you just can't come through. And you know what, at the end, some other time, it can be easily removed in minimal cost. We're not putting curbs, we're not cutting curbs, we're not making concrete, it's an aluminum, just a swing fence that can't be more than, what, four foot high? Five foot high?
So I still don't believe we have authority to give you an answer on that, based upon what's, what's in our lease. I mean, Mr. Ortega had a well behind, you know, the fact that when you go, when you go west toward.
Not voluntary, but it's not, he's.
They don't have, they don't have, they don't have a very voluntary restriction of easement.
We do, we do not, that's.
Yeah.
I can, I can say that definitively.
And, yeah, we've been told that, so, yeah.
Well, once again, you're not, you're not eliminating, you're not, you're not blocking it off, you're just, you're just temporarily, okay.
How are people getting to that spot right now?
I'm sorry.
How do people get right here right now? If none of this exists?
So, right now, it's, it's a dirt path. It's slightly raised up compared to the land to the east and to the west of it, because the car wash was using it as essentially a construction access point. And I'm sure that the doctor probably knows more than anyone, there's a lot of yellow iron that was parked essentially where our future Big B is wanting to be.
So can I drive from here? Out here right now? Can I go, approximately two hundred?
No, no, there's giant stumps, so we had trees removed, so there's giant stumps, the ground is meaningfully, you know, I would call it not a drivable horn. If you have a four-wheel-drive Jeep, you probably could do it, but not in your Chrysler two-hundred.
That's why they don't let me drive.
So, I'm also looking at whether there would be a way to discourage or change the sightline a little bit visually by having some shrubbery that kind of reduces the visibility. Yeah, like, so you already have like an evergreen tree planted here, but I was thinking in here. And then the other thing I'm thinking is, would it be conceivable to you something like temporary, those temporary speed bump kinds of things to induce the likelihood of people wanting to cross there, or make it harder?
I have two speed bumps out there.
You do?
Yeah.
I don't see that as.
Oh, I'm jealous of you.
There's poppers all the time.
So, so, I mean, here's, here's what I can, so you made the request, I think, three times, so, I mean, it's not lost on you, on offense. I can tell you, and I can tell you, my business partner can also tell you, we cannot opine yes or no on that. We would have to have a conversation with the landlord, and we don't know what he's going to say. I can tell you, there's nothing in our lease that provides us with unfettered ability to make that call to the positive or to the negative. So if he says no, I guess I'm asking to throw this back to you. So, he says, we can put up a sign, right, or something, but, and I'm not even sure if he's willing to do that, but, and he says no to the fence, the gate, right? Where, where are we at?
Good question.
Because I, I can tell you, I think that the response that we've been from Sal or Art Tech API, so we use the same Civil API, and they have some, some subs under there for Civil, but essentially we use the same people who built the car wash for expediency's sake, because we could give you a long shop story about how long this has been in development. But the point is, is that we, we don't have that ability. So if he comes back and he says, let me give worst-case scenario, to the Planning Commission for your consideration. So if he says, "No, no sign on our property," right? Because there is a legal easement there, and he says, "No gate," then my question is, is where do we stand?
I hear, I hear what you're saying.
This drive is already in, correct?
Correct.
So right now, I could be driving north out Washington Street, turn onto that drive, and cut through the Dax property, right?
You could, you could go, go down Parcel, Parcel A, which is the drive, and you could make one or two choices when we're fully developed. You could turn to the right, and you could go into the doctor's parking lot, I'll call it the main parking lot. You could turn to the left, if the Big B isn't busy, and swoop right into the drive-through. So those would be both of your options when the site's developed.
So your curb cut is only going to, maybe for the reasonable problem, the problem is already offset.
The problem is already present. And then, and then when you talk about moving the curb cut back, right? If you moved it back off-center, you're actually creating another issue. So for ADA purposes, which obviously everyone's cognizant these days of ADA and access, you could have someone who's, you know, if we're super busy, right, they could get locked in, and then you could also have, you know, some more complex situations if you move that back farther, and as Mr. Ortega said, and again, I, I don't have any expertise in this, but, you know, you know, drive lane engineers looking at, hey, how do I make it as easy and streamlined and through as possible, which is what they offer you.
Yeah, I think when we initially were doing this and putting this together with our management officials and doing the easement, because I believe it, Joe looked at this and was kind of like, yep, we like that design.
One, one thing I think might be advantageous was, was Joe's idea that, at least on the site, as the site, as the Planning Commission, you can encourage, they already are trying to encourage with the right turn only when the drive-through exits. I do think adding a, adding a raised curb configuration that forces vehicles exiting the drive-through lane to turn to the south is something they should consider, as an extra, extra.
The noise of, the noise of the exiting through there, and the coming, the ingress through pedestrians is still cool.
That's, that's my, that's my, that's my problem.
It's a solved problem.
A question that I have, I guess. Mr. Miss Harris, do you believe that you can come to an agreement with Dr. State? Do you think that you guys can come to an agreement to solve, or have a resolution where it addresses your concerns, but also addresses my concerns as well, that that being a major cut through? Because what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to head off, we're having to get the village involved, having to get the police department involved later on. Trying to, I'm trying to resolve all that stuff now, because that's what I'm asking. So do you believe that you guys can come to an agreement with that as being a cut through?
So, Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
So here's what I will tell you. So we will take every effort to control all aspects that we can. So I heard two suggestions. The third is something we can ask the landlord, so.
What's your, what's your third?
So, so number one is, we are willing to put a sign right when they're leaving the drive-through window that says, "Right turn only," this is number one. Number two, we're willing to take Joe's suggestion and make a noticeable curb cut that directs traffic back through the car wash and back to M24. So again, that's going to take most of the traffic that way. And then the third thing, which is not in our control, what we can ask the landlord, is on our property, obviously, the doctor can sign it as well, to say, "No through traffic."
Okay.
So, but the third one, we, we need landlord approval.
Yeah, the first two, I'm not, to be honest, I am not really concerned about those two. I don't believe that they're going to turn the left for that side. I don't think that that's going to be the issue. The issue is to come in from traffic through all, through his property. That's what I'm really concerned about. So the other two are the curb cut, right, and the sign that he must turn right? That is, that's not something that I'm asking for. What I'm asking for is the figuring out, can you, can you potentially put a small gate there to, so people can't take that cut?
And it comes down to which side they're willing to put the gate up. If you want a gate up, keep his way down.
Isn't it true that, that problems are in here? They cut through the dock to get into this, this way?
It's not, because there's no reason to cut through the dock, through his, through his parking lot anyways, because they just go straight to Lincoln. What it is, is now they want to go someplace, now they want to go to Big B Coffee because they want coffee.
So you think they're just cutting through because they want coffee?
Yes.
And then they go in there.
That, I guess, I know, so what's, that's what I'm saying, is.
Self-bond traffic.
Self-bond traffic.
Coming from the west side of that.
Everybody that lives on the west side that cuts through Pontiac, all of them, all of them water some.
The one thing I think is, the thing is, all those people that do enter the site, they're also the ones that exit that same way, they want to go back home. So they're going to want, chances are.
Most likely, when you get coffee in the morning, you're getting it in the morning, and you're on your.
So, so I have another suggestion.
Sure, go ahead. Yeah, this is the whole thing.
We want to work together.
Yes.
My very first comment was, I want to be good.
Perfect.
Right, yeah. So, if, if, I mean, I've heard some varying opinions on the Planning Commission regarding to the easement and the purpose of it and all, all those things, right? So if the doctor has two entry points into his parking lot, one is through Lincoln, right, one is through M24, what if, to preclude that, that he has some sort of expandable gate that goes across where his parking lot essentially sells, and, and then puts that up during business hours or permanently, and that is used, because if, then it's on his property, he can completely control the access point, he's not prohibiting any of his clients from patronizing his business, because they do have two separate access points.
So, so, they had, I'm sorry to interrupt, but they had another option to say, where they just came up with. They're talking about moving, is this what they?
This is the easement, right?
The thing is this, is if you guys can come up with an agreement, that's what I'm looking for. I just want to make sure that you guys can come up with an agreement where it doesn't have to, once again, it doesn't get to a point where down the road, the village gets involved, and the police department gets involved in monitoring in that situation. That's what I'm trying to look for. So, if you guys.
Okay.
So, I, I.
Sorry, I interrupted you.
No, 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 all right, sorry.
For, for buying the doctor's conversation here, I do believe we can come up with some kind of resolution. We were just talking about kind of offsetting that main entrance down south, I guess, you know, from orientation and.
It's not, it's not like we're accepting of that.
It's a very reasonable approach.
Okay.
If it remains the line of sight, you can have, exit with a right turn only, people could still get in, they would actually have a little bit more room to get into the queue than they would to say.
Thank you, that, that right there resolves everything, okay. So I'm, yeah, go ahead, do you have a question?
No, you're good. I, I think the intent of the discussion, as you mentioned, was to get to this exact point right now for the Planning Commission to have confidence that both parties can work together towards an amicable solution. Not to find resolution at this very moment, but ensure that it can be found.
Yeah, but we could, we could have some prior discussions with all parties, and we'll, I'm confident we'll figure out a solution.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you have to as well.
Absolutely, you have a good point, though.
So, on this map here, we've got the, the coffee shop, and basically the apartment, because they're like.
Who do you want, who do you want to see your illustration? Is it for us, or?
It's for like, it's for kind of everyone, but I don't have a big enough.
Where's your ordering queues of menu board? If the menu board was prior to them coming in off Lincoln, and they couldn't get to it, because they already passed it?
No, it's a.
But I'm saying, maybe they moved.
They're saying that, here, where's the menu board?
Well, I guess I'd say that.
The menu board is above the ADA land, landing area, just past ADA ramp. If you come out Lincoln Street, you can't get there, you, and maybe that'd be a deterrent.
Right, right, if the, the ordering was like over here, and basically people have to go all the way around and then come back here, and especially if you made the curve out so that you couldn't take a left turn here.
Where are you requesting the menu board be?
Under the assumption that the menu board is here, is what you're saying.
And off Lincoln, and you can't get to the menu board, because you're.
Yeah, that's all right. So the way that we have it designed right now is the menu board is actually where.
Which is normal.
Yeah, we want to have enough for stacking, for the extra room at that time.
Yeah, sorry. I knew there was a sheet, because I did see.
That would give you more time, right? Because the order is way, way back.
Yes.
You don't add your time, you add your time.
Correct.
His, his point was, if they've been off Lincoln Street, and I, I'm beyond the menu ordering list socks, I, I kind of screwed myself, pardon my French.
Especially if there's a right turn lane.
Right, well, that's what I was saying, if we didn't have like a curb cut here to take, like, if you couldn't take a left here, then that would just totally eliminate.
So are you saying that you don't need the other one?
What we're saying, don't push that in it? I still, I still think moving it solves the issue.
This is for you guys, Doc.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. So I would say, uh.
CJ.
So this. Any other comments? All right. I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary site plan for Parcel 04-27-278-024, Just Coffee Beans Oxford, also known as Big B Coffee. Contention upon recommendations outlined by McKenna's letter December. Contingent upon recommendations outlined by McKenna's letter December 18th, 2023. All right, so we have a motion and we already have a second. So any other questions?
What if we just decide that?
So what we decided was that we, that everything is, that the site plan is, is how it is. Is that it's every, all the contingencies are based on McKenna's letter, the Roe letter, um, the fire department and the police letters. And that they are going to come up with a resolution themselves about how it's solved.
That wasn't in, in your motion?
It doesn't have to be.
Because it's on, it's on.
Because it's on there anyway.
It's on here?
Um, my question about that is that the McKenna recommendations are, um, not specific about landscape requirements or the architectural, they're recommendations.
So, uh, so what are they not specific on?
Well, the, the, the building architecture, that we discussed some minor changes, but those were just mentioned as recommendations. If you're saying that we are voting to approve contingent on addressing those, I think we need to spell that out.
Yeah, I don't disagree. And, and I believe it's.
Same thing with landscaping.
Bullet point one B, a loading zone acceptable to the planning commission. We should explicitly state that loading zone location is acceptable to the planning commission or not. And/or the same for, um, a revised landscape plan, I don't know whether we require any changes. As of now, we have not.
So if we, uh, so in that, so I, I have a motion, we have a second. We speak, we need to make those changes. I have to, we have to vote on that, right? And then we can, I can make a note. All right, so, um.
Madam Secretary, can we take a vote?
Okay, so we're changing. We're going to make the small changes.
Hang on.
Well, you can revisit.
We have, we have a motion. We have a motion and we have a support. We have to vote on the motion. You can either accept and it goes as is, or say no, and we then have the ability to amend aforementioned motion.
Correct.
So Madam Secretary, roll call vote for the motion on the table.
Costor?
No.
Hi, Larry?
No.
Almond?
No.
Lynn?
No.
Schultz and Miller are absent.
Okay, so, uh, let's revise that then. This is the, this is the art of motion making. So, um.
Once we get to a beginning, looking at, I would suggest the, the revision or amendment to explicitly state in McKenna letter, bullet point one B, is deemed acceptable to the planning commission. That's a bullet point one C, which is regarding the landscape plan. Do you have any concerns except for the landscape plan that's this?
Um, what I mentioned is that I, um, would like to see the Ginkgo trees substituted with native North American Michigan possible trees.
Is that the only thing?
That's the only.
So, um.
Ginkgo tree replaced with native, Michigan native species.
What was the other one?
I believe that was it.
Uh, Mo, was there anything else that you had that you specifically?
I'm not going to vote for a site plan that has problems that we're saying, yes, the problems you guys work here. It's not the way I would do such. This should be resolved before we approve it, in my opinion.
It is a, um, it is a.
That's your opinion?
No, I'm sorry, that's reasonable, Kevin, I'm not shocked. Um. Anything else?
You might be just adding, uh, two and three and four. Just track here as a reminder, because we know they're never going to pay. And then, uh, four, the site plan, uh, signs will comply with 41.13. And then four, is just any other items from the city engineer.
Correct. But that's all part of the, your recommendations outlined in McKenna letter in December. Okay, so, um, let's do this again, uh, before you make a second. Uh, I make a motion to approve the preliminary site plan for parcel ID zero four dash two seven, two seven eight, dash oh two four. Just Coffee Beans Oxford, also known as Big B Coffee. Contingent upon recommendations outlined by McKenna letter dated December 18th, 2023, with also, uh, contingent upon, also amended bullet point one B, is acceptable to the planning commission. And the one C, the Ginkgo tree replaced with Michigan, with the Michigan native trees.
Do we have a second?
So just wanted to make sure that we had that on there.
Yep.
All right, now, do I have, is there a second?
Yeah. Okay.
All right.
Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Hi, Larry?
Yes.
Almond? Schultz is absent. Lynn? Ballard?
Yes.
Thanks a lot for your time.
Thank you very much.
I was wrong.
Have your.
Okay.
With that being said, um, that takes us to full business for the action plan review on landscaping.
You'll have to email that.
Sure.
General question, is there, we've got two folks that are visiting this evening. Let's say, we've done a lot of homework in and preparing for discussion. So I don't want to dismiss the dialogue, but a general question for the team, uh, commission. Do we spend fifteen, twenty minutes this evening reviewing it? Are we up for it? Or do we consider, um, utilizing January 16th, 2024, where we anticipate more time to go?
So are you asking?
I'm asking for feedback for the.
So Alster? He makes recommendations for our site plan. So we just need to make sure he's.
I got some really interesting ideas. We all are.
You guys step out here that way, right?
Appreciate it. Okay, sorry, I didn't know you had to.
Yep, one more.
We're about our business.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you all very much.
Uh, so my suggestion would be that in addition to the recommendations that, um, Mario prepared for us, I, I would like to encourage the commission to review something that I sent out and then us bring it up next time in January 16th. And what I, what I'm especially interested in, in addition to what you've done, is the concept of the credit that is used specifically, the, the ordinances that I noticed in, um, that I included with Birmingham. Um, credits, they have two different options for credits. And I think that's an interesting question. And if we could all just commit to review that when we come back in January, then I think we can have a more meaningful discussion and we don't have to keep like kicking it down the road. I think those two issues are the most important in my mind.
Yeah, and I, I might add on just in terms of homework. Um, as you might see, I was trying to keep the, um, revisions focused on clarifying things and the efficient and updating. So my question would be, what your, what your direction to me would be to make additions to something like the Birmingham credit issue? Also, um, if you would like, whether, just in general, do you like the idea of remaining flexible or having a little bit more specific rigid, um, requirements in there in terms of like, say, quantity and, um, specific locations? Like how flexible or flexible you want to be? Then number one. And then number two, the idea of, um, looking at landscaping not just for the aesthetic, but also the functional aspect. Um, there's a lot of communities that utilize it for, uh, what's called stormwater best management practices. Basically, that means utilizing, um, the alternative of, on sites where it can fit, have them be first flush areas that treat stormwater, treat that. Um, mainly that's, a reason I bring that up is because it's a way to, even, even though we have small sites, it's a way to mitigate at the right point at the beginning, flooding issues. So if you feel flooding is an issue in the village, you know, if you want, if you want to explore that or not, just that's a thing. You want to go down that route or not worry about it at the moment. And then, um.
It could be rolled into the credits even.
Exactly, yeah. Be rolled into the credits. So those, those just, those additional things to think about. So you can provide new direction on how you want the ordinance to go.
Is anyone opposed to that, um, game plan? January 16th? We focus and hone in on, um, the potential for credits being introduced as part, as well as a further in-depth review of Mario's feedback?
I strongly support it.
Okay. Okay, um, so I think that's then, uh, the plan. Um, landscape warrants to be reviewed on January 16th.
So no one can get sick?
No.
We don't need that.
I self-concluded.
Any other comments on the landscape plan? Oh, okay. And I don't believe you need a motion to close that out. We can just simply have to, but we comment, um.
They're all in the community room now.
They're all figuring out.
Turn the lights down, I'm going to have to take a little row there chat.
Yeah, good. Um, consultant administration comments?
Joe, Terry? Nope, um, thanks for working with me as I try to get this over the hump on today versus keep it out of the holidays. You know, there was some short time frame that we were up against. I appreciate you guys speaking. You know, the electronic person's plans on Avenue, the hard plans weren't revealed until today. That's okay, that's okay.
All right. Um, okay. Oxford Township Planning Commission, John, it's Justin.
Uh, they're still working through, um, the master plan change. So there will be a, uh, there's a survey that was completed. Uh, at least the, the draft that was completed. So I'm sure very soon they're, they're going to have a, um, survey go out. So people will have access to it. I strongly recommend, strongly recommend that everyone reviews it, that you participate in it and get your neighbors to participate in it because it's going to have a really big effect on the results, on how the master plan for the township is. So, um, yeah, there's, there's the potential for a lot of new developments, new developments, like building developments. And, uh, how this master plan gets implemented will be a determinant what type of changes come around this wonderful community.
Is it going to as a paper survey?
No, it's an electronic survey. There'll be several different ways in which you'll be able to access it.
Okay, so if we'll have to find it, it's not going to find us. In other words, we'll.
They're trying to get people to, you know, for you to find it, but you have to, uh, find it. So I believe it's going to be on the township website.
Yeah, I read that.
And I think also there's going to be a link on Facebook. So I'm sure there's going to be some of those things. And there's going to be community engagement through, um, some of the churches and some of the other.
I think the township house has a plan available for review right now or something.
Aren't they required to, to notify all of the surrounding municipalities about their trarats or whatever they're doing with the master plan revisions? So, and ask for our review and comments?
They're, they're required by state law first to, when they begin the, the process for the master plan, to say that they're undergoing. And then when the master plan first, when their final draft is completed, that gets sent out to every adjacent municipality. And then they have a sixty day comment window. So it's beginning and end, um, in terms of, so that way from the get, beginning, it is a little bit more about them people, uh, adjacent communities going out and looking for it. But in terms of having residents and, and the community at large, you know, provide input, it's all about how they craft it within their own scope of work for their public. And it's, believe me, they want people to find it. And they're going to want people to, like, they're, they're doing everything they can, I'm sure, to try and get. Because every year in a plan, you want input from your.
They're looking for input. There is, there's a hope of what they're going to get. So I'm, you know, there, there's a number that they hope they get. Hopefully we can make.
Is McKenna doing that, um, this plan? Who's doing it?
Carlisle, right? Thank you. Yeah, I'm going to. Carlisle, that's right.
There you go.
Um, and let's see, last thing is, uh, there's a new document that was just recently approved off Drainer as well. So there's, uh, there'll be, uh, new homes.
That's the problem.
Uh, no, it's, uh, further down. Like, uh, yeah, so other than that, that's, uh, that's all we, that's all they have right now.
Thanks, Justin.
ZBA?
No, we didn't.
No. And D?
Uh, I know Mario's here last night going over the TIF plan.
They, they need me, but we're working on their.
Okay, they went over it last night. Mario prepared for them.
Yeah.
But they've been doing a plan.
But it's mainly focused on the, uh, it is focused on the TIF and the develop, extending the TIFs to allow them to continue on various projects.
They have a vacancy. Jordan Johnson, who's been on for about thirteen years, resigned last night. She's got a lot of scheduling conflicts with her classes, like the teachers and the teaching. So we will, they have a stay ended last night on the DA.
How many?
Yeah, that's BA, someone with an interest in, uh, downtown district, either resident business or building. Because the majority of the board have to have an interest in downtown and that thing. Now it's four-four.
Okay, any questions or comments? I'll say mine. Uh, future business we have a major report to look forward to.
That's true, yep.
Um, when do we anticipate reviewing that?
The next meeting. Whatever we meet next, we'll have it.
Okay.
I was thinking, there's a, like, all, that we do with, like, all the groups together. Like, there's like a once a year, like, oh, like, there's, are you really on?
Like a, uh, like a joint planning going and.
Right, right, yeah. In business, we call it an all hands.
Yeah. Not really. Um, couple of jobs here and stuff out here. Some overlay and the way the laws are in, some people have to be, uh, in overlay, overlapped.
Well, then a, a final comment from me before adjournment. Thank you for bearing me the last, uh, twelve months, um, in this, in this seat. And I wish you all happy holidays, Merry Christmas.
Happy New Year.
With that, we will adjourn.